I call a meeting to order. Would you all stand for our pleas of allegiance and a prayer, please?
Our pleas of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, we humbly come to you today, asking for your guidance, your assistance, your blessings, as we attempt to make the best decisions as possible for our city of Lawrence. We also ask that you give special blessing to Counselor Sharon Freeman, as her family goes through a period of grief, as well as another special blessing for Councilman Bobby Jones, may he have a speedy and healthy recovery. These are our blessings, we're asking Jesus' name. Amen.
The termination of quorum is next on the agenda. We definitely have a quorum. Blue Star Banner presentation. I know I saw some soldiers out there, so I know that they are part of that.
the Blue Star Banner to those who have served, and certainly the families who are involved in that. Too often, we tend to forget the impact that it has on the families, and as they send their boys and girls off to service in there. So for us, it offers us an attempt with certainly the long and storied history of the city of Lawrence with Fort Harrison, and our attachment to the military, to give us an opportunity to kind of say thanks, and to give recognition, certainly where it's been well deserved at that point. So, all right, Joe, I'll hand it back over to you now at this point.
So, good evening. My name is Mary Jo, and I'm the Director of the Blue Star Banner Program. So first of all, Mayor Collier and I would like to say thank you to Captain Steele with the Lawrence Police Department, and Fire Chief Dino Pitalis with the Lawrence Fire Department, for escorting our Blue Star families to their seats this evening. Thank you for your willingness to serve and to help honor these families. I'd also like to introduce to you the military representatives who are standing with the families this evening. And if you want to go ahead and stand, Captain Casares, and Staff Sergeant Lucas Ponzler of the U.S. Army Indianapolis Metro South, and Commander Matthew Galvin of the U.S. Navy and our N O S C, our Navy Operational Support Center. So let's all thank them for their support. As many of you know, the Blue Star Banner Program honors the men and women who volunteered to go into active military reserves or National Guard to protect our freedoms and liberties here at home. The banners honor those who are stationed either domestically or internationally, and are away from their family and friends in our Lawrence community. We have a voluntary military, and many have chosen to make the military their careers, while others have chosen the military for other reasons. During the Revolutionary War, this nation had a voluntary militia who fought against oppression for freedom, to establish a new nation. Even now, this nation's military force continues to fight against tyranny and those who seek to destroy America's freedoms. They are our heroes, and we honor their service to this great nation. Mayor Collier appreciates this opportunity to honor our military for their service. This recognition is important for their families, who represent them here tonight, as their sacrifices are significant, as their loved ones help to defend our nation. We thank you for joining us in honoring your military personnel, and we thank you for the devoted care at home while they're in harm's way. The city of Lawrence now proudly displays the new banners for Lieutenant Michael Mossel and Private First Class Zach Haas. So Michelle and Bob, if you would like to come up. His drill sergeant said he was very dedicated and had nothing but heart in his basic training. Zach Haas went from the lowest physical test score to the second highest. Zach is 23 and single, and his current job assignment is M O S C 11B, Military Occupation Specialties, 11B as an infantryman. They're commonly referred to as the backbone of the Army. In school, Zach played football up until high school, and then switched to music, was first chair in the marching band, later he enrolled in an automotive program. His favorite hobby is racing cars and working on them a close second, he's approximately six of them now. He admires Nikola Tesla and feels he's the greatest inventor of modern times. Zach also says that his favorite thing about being in the Army is learning to shoot. His future plans include being a jet engine mechanic, and currently he's applying for a program through the U.S. Army to get his A and P, which is an aircraft mechanic license. With all of his determination and basic training, we're sure he'll do just that. Representing him tonight is his proud mom, Michelle Hawker, and his grandfather, Bob Harmon. Michelle says Zach collects cars, firearms, and recently purchased a boat. And with all of his expensive hobbies, he'll need a high-paying career. Thank you very much. And then Mayor, here are... I guess just two would all be okay, but if you have other people... That's it? Thank you. Okay, so Marcia and Jim, and Elizabeth. And Commander Galvin, if you'd like to... Lieutenant Michael Mossel from the U.S. Navy. His primary job assignment is a C-2 Greyhound pilot, which delivers people and parts to the USS Eisenhower, which is currently on deployment in Bahrain. His secondary job is that of Landing Signal Officer, or LSO, which helps the aircraft safely land on the carrier after missions. As an LSO, he recently helped an F-18 land that had mechanical problems and only had enough fuel for one try to land. To add to the excitement, there are normally four arrestor cables, but on that day, there were only three working. Michael was successful in helping the F-18 down, the pilot sought out Michael and thanked him for helping him successfully land. At a minimum, he saved the Navy a multimillion dollar plane, and at a maximum, he saved the pilot's life. He is obligated to serve for 10 years in the Navy. On an R O T C Navy Scholarship at Purdue, he was commissioned as an officer upon graduation in 2011. If he separates from the Navy after his 10-year commitment, he will most likely become a commercial pilot, which has been his dream since he was a child. Michael's been married for four years to Amanda, and they have an 18-month-old son, Owen. His favorite hobby is playing ice hockey. He began playing at the age of five and continues to play in a Navy recreational league. He hopes to coach youth hockey when his son, Owen, gets old enough to play. Michael also enjoys writing, he writes the monthly newsletter for the Eisenhower while on deployment. And representing Michael tonight are his proud parents, Marcia and Jim Mossel, and his sister Elizabeth. And this concludes our portion of the Blue Star Banner Program, and thank you all for being here this evening.
Before I, we finish up today, I forgot to give you the packet, so here. But I met Commander Galvin about a month ago, in a ceremony in which both of us shed a few tears, as I recall. But I will say this, I'm gonna keep hanging out with you as much as I can, because kind of cool things happen whenever I'm hanging out with you. So thanks for coming today. Thank you to the families that are here tonight, thank you for the service of your sons, and certainly, I want to say this to the entire group, that thank you to those who have served, thank you to those who are serving, and certainly, a special thanks to those who may be serving in the future. But thanks, all of you, for coming tonight.
You're more than welcome to stay or leave at this time. We're gonna continue on with the city business. Thank you for your service. All right, next on the agenda, we have comments of the council members, and special recognitions or resolutions.
Mr. President, I have a couple.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes. Is there where we can look into putting guardrails at Shaitland Way and Amherst Drive? A state trooper that lives at the end of the street has clocked the speeders at 60 miles an hour, and he just wondered if we could put a guardrail between Shaitland Way and Amherst Drive. And the other one, a request to have the owner of the lot on Sunnyside Road, 5968 Sunnyside Road, to mow or cut the high weeds down. There has been sightings of coyotes coming from that open field, commercial field. And it's owned by Mitchell Group, so if we could get someone from the code department to come and take a look at that open field, and I await for the response from the comments from the mayor's office at the end of the council, before the council meeting ends. And also, I would like to invite the CEO from the Indianapolis Public Library to come and speak. Jackie Needus, to tell us about our Lawrence branch that's coming on the 4th.
Thank you, Counselor Freeman, and thank you, President Williams, for allowing me to join your agenda this evening on rather late notice. But I understand and know that many here in the Lawrence area are wondering what is going on with our public library, and especially, what is going on with your future public library. And I have an opportunity this evening to update you a little bit. I have given you all a copy of something called "The Latest Chapter." This is a status report on the library's strategic plan. You may recall that the library has adopted a strategic plan, copies of this are available on our website. And in that plan, it very clearly states, in fact, I have the page marked, that we will be adding a location in Lawrence Township to reduce a gap in service. And there is actually a map that suggests approximately where we felt that needed to go, in order to fulfill the desire to improve people's access to library services up in the northeast part of Marion County. We are very pleased to share with you that the conversations for that project are well underway, and are continuing very positively. We have been working intently with the Fort Ben Reuse Authority for, since the launching of this strategic plan. And we have an M O U with the Reuse Authority, so we are both committed to the establishment of a branch library on the Fort Ben Reuse Authority's geography. And we have identified a location that is mutually very acceptable to all of us. It is on Parcel J, the last big remaining piece, and they've got a big chunk of that with our name on it, and the M O U says that they know we're coming. We have money set aside to develop the library on that site, and we can assure you that we still are coming. In the meantime, there's a couple of really wonderful things happening here in the Lawrence area, as far as libraries are concerned. And I want to take this moment to commend your school system to you all, because the Lawrence Township School System has been extraordinarily progressive in terms of its efforts this last year and a half, to promote reading with our schoolchildren. They began by joining us in a campaign to make sure that every single school child in the school system had an active library card. We worked together and issued over 10,000 library cards to children who did not have them. And we understand that in many instances, the reason children did not have those cards is because we didn't have a convenient library for them to visit. So we own some responsibility about that, we haven't kept up with the population patterns. But through the schools' help, every single child in Lawrence Schools now has a library card. This year, what they did in addition to that, is they had every single one of their school media centers, elementary, middle, and high school, all join what we call our shared system. So if you are now in one of the media centers in one of your schools, and you go to look up something in the catalog, you will be looking up something in our shared catalog. So the resources of Lawrence are now accessible to all the schools, and they are also able to access our items. So they immediately had access to another 1.2 million items. And we are absolutely thrilled about what is happening. Your children are reading like crazy. They have had, we have had weeks when 500 books have been delivered to your schools from our libraries. And so for children who don't have easy access to transportation after school, or perhaps their parents' schedules don't work for them to bring them to a library after school, they're getting access to more of those materials during the school day. And we're just, can't say enough about the wonderful collaborative relationship that we have with your schools up here, and we think it really bodes well for our continued efforts to get another library up here in Lawrence. As I said, we do have the money approved by the City-City Council, which is our fiscal authority. They have approved our bond issues. The Library Board has a preliminary bond resolution approved, and the appropriations have been approved. We are scheduled to begin doing the work on, well, already identified the site, and we would anticipate that this building would open in 2020. And that is based on how long it'll take us to get our operating budget up to the level that we can support an additional branch library. But we are on track to do that, and look forward to the chance to serve the citizens of Lawrence Township better than we've served them in the past. So happy to answer any questions, or if it's useful to you, for us to come sometime to speak to groups or organizations in any of your neighborhoods, please give us a call, and we'll do that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Any other counselors?
Mr. President?
Counselor Wells?
I have a few comments and questions for the administration, and if they, I could pose the questions now and get the answers under administrative comments, however. My first question, and I've gotten quite a few calls from people in my district, because the new street signs are going up, is exactly where the funding is coming for that. The mayor and I have spoken on that, but honestly, I had a brain melt, I guess, and I had forgotten what he had told me where that funding was coming from. But, so if we could revisit that. The other concern that I had is, once again, is this elementary school in my neighborhood. Three days in a row, I have called the police department, I've spoken to the policeman, administrative, about the parking demise over there. This council has done its due diligence in making 46th Street no parking. But yet, every day, these construction people are parking their equipment, their personal vehicles are being parked and blocking 46th Street, whereas, the people that live in that area, and the people that work back in the industrial parks, cannot traverse down 46th Street. I've seen one semi truck, and one landscaper with a big, both these vehicles had big trailers that they were pulling, had to back a turn and go completely a block backwards to 47th Street to get out of the neighborhood, because 42nd, or 46th Street wasn't accessible. And I talked to Mr. Lots about this situation, and thought maybe if we at least had signs, that no parking signs, and he says that the city's out of them. My question to the administration, can we not at least just go to Menards and buy some no parking signs, and nail them to the telephone poles that are there? Because the police chief Hoffman has been there once, there's been one or two other police officers has been there, they've given them warnings, and an hour after they leave, they're back out there parking on a street again. And a lot of it is, you know, the, maybe not the same people that were there, because there's new people that come in, there's deliveries being made, there's, you know, maybe not the same people that are there when the police is there giving them the warning, maybe somebody new an hour later. So the construction superintendent has been told, however, and apparently, he's not making any attempt to tell the people on the job site not to park out there. But the next issue that I had too, was I seen the email about the $50 prescriptions, and I was curious, is that going to be all employees, would that be the water company employees? And where would the funding for that be as well? But I think that's all I had.
All right. Counselor Wells, any other counselor?
Mr. President? Counselor Shavel? Got a call from a constituent at 6434 Harrison Ridge Boulevard, and about two months ago, DP, our DPW went out and tore up about 10 feet of sidewalk, put yellow tape around it, and it's not been fixed, and they don't know what was going on there. So they've put a couple messages in to DPW, and they were supposed to get back with this homeowner, and he's not heard back. So just be interested, if someone can make note of that, and either get back with me, or I'll call the homeowner, let him know what the plan is to go back and fix that sidewalk. Thank you.
Any other counselor? All right. Next on the agenda, we have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting for September 6, 2016, and September 21, 2016. There are motion on the floor.
Make the motion.
Motion by Counselor Freeman.
Second.
Second by Counselor Wheeler. Any discussion? All in favor, by a show of hand? Any oppose? Unanimous? Motion carried, approve the minutes. Next on the agenda, we have signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Is there a motion on the floor to pay the bills?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Counselor Wheeler.
Second.
Mr. President? I'm sorry, I have a quick question on the bills.
Soon we get to discussion. Second by Counselor Freeman. Any discussion at this time? Counselor Wells?
I had noticed, and Chief Pitalis may have the answer to this, or maybe the controller, but the garage door opener, they got hit by lightning. I noticed that that came out of the budget, I was just curious, would that not have possibly been a insurance-related expenditure that the insurance should have been responsible for, or no? Does anybody know?
We have submitted that to insurance, and everything after we've paid the deductible would be reimbursable.
Oh, so we may be getting our money back on it?
Potentially, yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor Shavel?
Jason, I just got a, just a couple quick questions. Do we, we have a contract with a company called Devil Web Hosting? It says it's for $1,875?
Refer me to the page that you're on.
It's page 1 of 1. That's how it printed out. Just Outburst Web LLC?
Yes, they've, yes, we do have a contract with them to develop our new website.
I got you, okay. And then the second question is, and this batch is for Verizon Wireless, $22,000, is that something that is gonna be ongoing for the rest of the year at that amount?
It is not. We had a, an issue with Verizon that dates back to late last year, with some of the routers that were installed in the public safety vehicles. The bills didn't get paid end of last year, first part of this year, then as we were in touch with Verizon, some of the routers weren't installed, but we were paying monthly service, so it took us some time to sort that out. It's been sorted out, now we're paying the bills that were on hold. So this is a catch-up?
Catch-up.
And then it'll be reduced, you know, to the monthly rate after that.
Is part of that Verizon going to be the body cams with the new technology that the LPD is using?
Right now, we have the two body cams on trial, and that service is through the body cam provider. It does use data through Verizon.
Okay.
Right now, the expectation, we still have some things to sort out there, but it's expected to be covered in the monthly data plan.
Okay. And then my last question, five or six charges for DPW task order, stormwater review, wouldn't that be paid out of the utility, instead of our general fund?
I think we've, for now, been paying that through DPW.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion at this time? Motion's been Counselor Freeman, Counselor Wheeler, discussion at this time? Show of hand for paying the bills. Any oppose? Motion carried, unanimously, pay the vouchers. Report of committees. Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, the Finance Committee met, and we discussed Proposal Number 17, which is dealing with the civil side salaries, as well as Proposal Number 20, and those are still in committee. They're in committee because tonight, as we'll be seeing further in the agenda, you know, I am sponsoring an ordinance that will reduce the pilot by 250,000, and the Finance Committee will be considering those budget cuts. As well as, Mr. President, I am also asking that the committee needs more time to work through this.
Is there any objection for extending a little bit more time?
Mr. President, my only question would be is ensuring that we're not at risk of meeting the proposed or the budget deadline that's been stated.
Right. October 19th?
Yes, sir.
So we would be on track, I would take it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any other? If not, time extended.
Thank you.
Committee as a whole. Basically, for the committee as a whole, we had a meeting where the directors for each department came forward and presented their budget, and talked about any potential issues or just overall discussion of their budget. There were no significant issues, there were questions posed, and all the questions were answered. So that's pretty much the report on the committee as a whole. Anyone else that attended the meeting have anything else to talk about in reference to it? Okay? All right. Next on the agenda, we have a public... Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing for proposal number 20, 2016's clerk.
Proposal number 20, 2016, introduced by Counsel Giles, a proposal for an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the 2017 budget year.
The public hearing is now open at this time. Any discussion? Comments from the public? Seeing that there's none, at this time, the public hearing is now closed. We're moving on to unfinished business. Proposal number 17, 2016, which we already extended more time in the finance committee. Proposal number 20, 2016, are the same, in finance committee. Proposal number 23. Okay, it's still, it's still in code committee?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Under new business, we have proposal number 24, which is in finance committee. Oh, as you were. Proposal number 24, 2016, city clerk.
Proposal number 24, 2016, introduced by Counsel Giles, a proposal for an ordinance establishing a water cash reserve fund, a sewer cash reserve fund, and concerning payments from the city's utilities to the city of Lawrence.
Okay. So it is in code finance committee, I'm sorry. Thank you. Comments administration?
Try just to answer some of the questions that were posed earlier. The Sunnyside Road, Counsel Freeman, we are going to cite the owner of that property for high grass and weeds. We generally do not cite commercial property owners. It's a 30-day process to get the grass cut in there. Starting on January 1 of next year, we do, we will have a new code enforcement procedure, which will be citing commercial owners much earlier and getting them on the ball with regard to that. So that will take care of, hopefully, next year. The guardrail is actually an NDOT responsibility, so we'll call NDOT and give them an idea of that particular term that you're talking at, and see if they'll put a guardrail up there. The street signs were actually funded through a grant that actually was nearly four years ago now, when that money was actually appropriated. So the street signs are now being placed up throughout the city. They're kind of doing section at a time. But the funding for that was received quite a while ago, actually. So we're just now getting to the signs being put up. The no parking, short of, it sounds to me like that the construction superintendent may need a call from perhaps me directly, Counsel Wells. If you know his name and number, I'll give him a call directly and inform him of what the policy is over there, see if that'll resolve the problem. Barring that, we may have to bring in and start towing a few vehicles at some point to get the point across. We'll have to get our no parking signs up there shortly, and I think we do have the ability to put some signs up on posts and so on before we can do that. And then Counsel Shevlock, can you give me that address again of the sidewalk that was torn up?
6434 Harrison Ridge Boulevard.
Was there a water main break, maybe?
You know, I, I asked him that, and they said that they were tearing it up when he left for vacation, and he came back, and they hadn't seen any work since. And I can, he sent me a picture of it, so I can forward that picture to you, but it's about 10 or 12 feet of sidewalk, and it's yellow taped off.
Is it close to a hydrant, or?
No.
Yeah, I'll have to do a little bit of investigation, because I really don't know why we would have torn up that much sidewalk, or for what reason.
Yeah.
But he, you're sure it was our DPW that tore up the sidewalk?
It's what, he said it was Lawrence stickers on the truck.
Yeah, I'll try and, first of all, make sure I know what I'm talking about before I ask the question.
I thought it might have, maybe it was stormwater, because it looks like on the other side, it drops, and so.
Yeah, if there was some erosion taking place in the sidewalk, or had gotten off kilter, so to speak, we may be just replacing the sidewalk, which we are doing a little bit of that in the very near future. So it may be that in place, but I'll try to find out for you for sure.
Yeah, I'll send you the picture. That's all I know of it.
Okay. Beyond that, just a little bit of news, I will actually be out of the office for the next two days. At an IAC conference, myself, clerk treasurer Kathy Walton, Jason Fenwick, and Moore Hoffel, I'll be down at the IAC conference meeting of mayors, clerk treasurers, attorneys, and controllers. So I'll be out of town for the next two days. I certainly trust the city will be in good hands when I'm gone at that time. So other than that, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. As a reminder, for citizen comments, we have a three-minute time limit, and we, we would hope that it would be in good taste and respectful. I would not tolerate anything less. Counsel Wheeler, if you would, make sure we stay according to the three-minute time limit.
Absolutely.
And the first person on this would be Patty Thomas. Patty Thomas, can you state your name and address for the record, ma'am? You look familiar.
It's Patty Thomas, and I live at 5410 Brassy Drive, that's Windy Ridge subdivision. To the council, I just want to know what they're doing with regards to economic development for Lawrence. I've lived here 10 years, I see all the growth, all the apartments and all the homes, but I don't see any retail. And the other thing I have to say is, when you get off Pendleton Pike, you see this nice sign, "Welcome to Lawrence," and all you see is gas stations, dollar stores, and there's about 24 used car lots. I don't think we need any more. Just comment I wanted to make. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the list, we have Carlton Curry.
Carlton Curry, 11230 Windy Wood Court, Mr. President, members of the council. Two comments, one with respect to proposal number 17. I had hoped to attend the finance committee meeting and chat about it there, but it was canceled, so I'll just take this opportunity here, since I may not have an opportunity before the next meeting. The last line, dealing with the compensation for the utility service board, is shown on that particular document, is $600 a year. I don't believe the council has the authority to set that value, that's set by the utility service board budget under a statute that I'm sure your attorney knows, if he doesn't, I can give it to him if necessary. The other, in, in just new business, I see proposal number 24, and just reading it tonight, I see very little in there that looks like it's within your authority. I'll be curious how the public hearing on that one goes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Next on the agenda, we have adjournment. Motion on the floor?
I'll make the motion.
Counsel Wheeler? Make the motion. Second by Counsel Shevlock. Any discussion? All in favor of adjournment? If you oppose? Unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you for attending tonight.